Welcome to your City Commission Study Session. Today is Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight, and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. In accordance with Kansas Open Meetings Act, the meeting can be viewed on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. The Leavenworth City Commission meeting will be open to the public with limited seating capacity. To reserve a seat, email C. Williamson at firstcity.org, no later than 4:00 PM on September 1st. Seats will be available on a first-come, first-served basis. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19, face coverings and social distancing are required to attend the meeting. Public is encouraged to continue to view the meeting via Facebook Live or Channel 2. Submit your comments or questions on agenda items to be read during the discussion on that topic to C. Williamson at firstcity.org, no later than 6:00 PM on September 1st. For call-in options related to commenting on agenda items, submit your inquiry to C. Williamson at firstcity.org. We have four agenda items and then a special meeting where we're going to need to go into executive session. And the first agenda item is Quarterly Report from Leavenworth School District, number 453, and I welcome Dr. Roth to our meeting.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, City Commissioner. It's always a pleasure to be before you to talk about the many good things that are going on at USD 453. And so, probably, not probably, the most interesting school year start that we've had in probably ever.
History.
Yeah.
However, we elected to start, our school board voted to start the 24th with a hybrid start with every other day and then taking Fridays to revisit with our teachers, revisit with our admin, see what went well, see what we needed to adjust to, and make improvements on. The positive is that the report back from our teachers and our admin, it was a very positive start. One of the best, they said. Things were a lot slower with half the kids in there. Our students did an outstanding job adjusting to the masks, adjusting to social distancing, changing our lunch patterns, our breakfast patterns, how we interact in hallways. We had a great response to that, not only by our students but our staff as well. And I think for the most part, you know, it's something that we can build on, even in future starts. So with that, our enrollment, our enrollment right now, as it sits, we have 3,318 students enrolled. We're down 252 students from our account last year. We have just over 400 students enrolled in our remote, rigorous remote. We have 92 students from Anthony, 99 from Brewer, 76 students from Henry Leavenworth, and 126 students from our intermediate school that's in rigorous remote. Our 7th and 8th grade, we do have them, we do have several students, 7th and 8th grade and 9th through 12th that are in rigorous remote, but those students remote right into our classes with our teachers. So our teachers are teaching and students are on Zoom, just like what you're seeing this evening with your meeting with Ms. Bader being on Zoom. Same concept. And so, that started, the Zoom part of it was introduced this week, so I don't have a real good report on that yet, meaning that we haven't had any feedback over the last two days, one way or the other on that. But our plan is to meet with the school board this Thursday to share feedback from our staff, share feedback from our students, and hopefully we get the feedback from our parents in time to share that with the school board. The school board on Thursday is going to consider whether or not to adopt the gating criteria from Leavenworth County. If they adopt the gating criteria from Leavenworth County, one of the options with that would be stay in this hybrid model and be at 50% occupancy so we can keep six-foot distancing in our classrooms and try to mitigate as many of the exposures as we possibly can. The other option would be to not adopt the gating criteria and either be all-in or all-out, which I know some of our local counterparts in the county have elected to do that. And so, our school board meets this Thursday at 6 o'clock to discuss primarily what they would like to do in regards to our COVID response, our COVID, whether or not we want to do any type of gating criteria with that. And so, it's going to be great discussion. I encourage, it's going to be streamed live as well. And I hope that, you know, from a community standpoint, we have people that are engaged in that and are watching. And like I said, we have polled our teachers and staff. Our students, their surveys out for our high school students went out yesterday afternoon. We're hoping to have that back. And our parent response, our parent question, I believe, is going out tomorrow morning. And so, we're hoping to have that information in front of the school board by Thursday at 6:00 PM. All of our construction projects on the bond are wrapping up our high school entryway, our secure entryway, which is the last piece at the high school. They're scheduled to turn it over to us next Tuesday. So we're excited to have that. The parking lot's done, all the lighting upgrades for safety have been added at the high school. Our middle school is 99% done. Our new intermediate school, we're just finding things that need touch-ups or maybe some tweaks here and there as far as like on the punch list items. Lawson Elementary, it's going to be our new early childhood center. That's way ahead of schedule. They're really rocking and rolling there. It's a totally different building on the inside than what it once was. I had the privilege to take Mr. Kramer through that a week or so ago just so he could see the transformation that took place. And so, everything is, bond-wise, is moving very well at this time. Our school board, as you all know, you voted, we swapped David Brewer Park for over at the middle school. The board did pass a three-point, just under a $3.2 million ballplex. It's going to have two varsity complete turf fields, so there'll be a complete turf baseball field and a complete turf softball field, and then a complete natural grass, normal baseball field, sort of like what you have, or not sort of, just like what you have out at the sports complex that the city owns, and then a natural softball field as well, along with concession stand and bathroom area, which was drastically needed in that area with middle school football and track, kids and people using that on weekends, that I'll actually have a bathroom facility in that area that can be accessible to our patrons during events and possibly even some weeknights for activities and exercise out there. So we're excited to get that going. It's in the, I believe they're applying for permits and all that. Their hope is to break ground toward the end of this month, first part of October. Once they break ground, weather permitting, they believe it's a 90 to 100-day process to complete the two turf fields and the concession stand and cement work. The natural grass fields will be probably not ready for next spring because we have to have a growing season for the new sod and get that solidified and going. So hopefully by next summer, those natural fields will be playable and usable at that time. And so, outside of that, I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Roth from my fellow commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I have three questions for you, Dr. Roth. You've mentioned 252, your population's down 252. Do you attribute that to a lot of homeschooling because of the pandemic?
I think it's a combination. Honestly, I think we have some parents and students that elected to do some homeschooling. Also, we do not have a virtual school per se, like a true virtual school for our 9-12 students. And I know that we had a lot of phone calls the last part of July, early August, talking about where their high school students could go. So we did have to recommend some virtual schools, some outside of our district. So I do believe that played into it as well. But I do believe just homeschool and just the uncertainty of this pandemic is changing that. And it's not just unique to Leavenworth. As I talked to colleagues throughout the state, everyone's seeing a real change in enrollment.
And I just wanted to understand that better, but also assure people that are watching, our population has not dropped 8 or 9% like the population of Leavenworth has not dropped. In fact, it's probably grown slightly. So I'm just curious about that. The south parking lot, you know, you put in straight-in parking, or not parallel parking, but straight-in parking rather than diagonal parking. Did you actually get a lot more parking spaces?
I think we ended up, and I don't have the exact number, but I think we ended up with like 11 additional parking spots. But the big goal on that was is to try to change that elevation of that parking lot to where people weren't losing mufflers and bumpers coming out of it. And so, we tried to do a controlled traffic pattern to get all the access in and then have a double turnout on the north side of that where they could go either north or south out of that parking lot.
All right, no, the traffic pattern going out, and I imagine it's in our schools, high school students that traffic that.
And it actually gained us some stacking ability too for families that actually come and pick their student up. So it gave us some additional stacking ability as well.
And one last question, is there a nurse in every school now?
There is, yes.
Okay, so they'll be busy this year. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from my fellow commissioners for Dr. Roth?
I have a question, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, and you might, Dr. Roth, you might not know this like right. It just takes time. So how often is the school board, are you going to readdress? You know, would there be a time this school year that maybe all the kids can go back? Or are you going to say, hey, let's just do this hybrid method until next year?
So with the high number of the students, especially K through 6 in rigorous remote, we actually had to pivot multiple times on that to staff it. And the thing that we've, that the board voted on and that we're requiring is the families that signed up for rigorous remote or in rigorous remote throughout the first semester, which ends right before, or on Christmas break. And the purpose for that is strictly staffing. We ended up going from seven teachers to about 14 teachers, and now each building, each of our three elementaries have one kindergarten, one first grade, one second grade, one third grade, one fourth grade in each building designated for their students on rigorous remote. And then we have four staff members at the intermediate school dedicated to rigorous remote there. And so, to allow in and out, it would really affect staffing and our ability to be able to keep consistency with lessons and pace and that kind of thing. And so, it was important, once they made a decision, even though there could be something that happens in October or something like that, we still want to, at this time, our plan is to stay in whatever selection was done until the end of the first semester, yes.
Okay, no, thank you.
Good, Commissioner Wilson.
So what challenges have you experienced with this model?
Many, many. There's a lot of anxiety. There's a lot of uncertainty. You know, working with the county health and the other county superintendents, really trying to set forth a plan that would be consistent for Jamie as well as all of us in the school districts throughout the county. I will tell you, Leavenworth, there was a lot of uncertainty going into the 24th, but at the end of this last week, I think there was a lot of that that's kind of settled down. But, you know, just like, I'll use Excelsior Springs, you know, they're playing a football game on Friday night. One of their opponents on the field actually tested positive, so the entire Excelsior Springs football team is now quarantined. So that's going to happen, and that's going to happen in every district. When you get a confined group of people together, we know that there's going to be those opportunities. Our goal, and I think our staff has done a great job trying to figure out how to mitigate some of that, but we also know that that exposure's there. It's unfortunate, but I will tell you this, Mr. Wilson, that we've had less negative phone calls in the last 10 days than we've had at any start up to this point. And I know it's because everyone understands the reality that we're dealing with, more so probably than any other year because we've been experiencing shutdowns and job changes and all of those types of things since March. And so, I can't thank this community enough to give us the latitude and the confidence to educate in person over 75% of our students, which I think is a great tribute to our staff, our teaching staff, because they are great and they're handling this well. But we do have challenges every day. I mean, we're dealing with things that none of us have ever had to deal with. And so, a lot of it, we do have planned out, but some of it's reactive as we go through as well.
That's good, appreciate it, thank you.
Just following up on that, if and when a student or staff person tests, you know, comes down with COVID-19, are you comfortable with the procedures that you have in the district to deal with that?
So we've had to experience that. And so, we have taken the information, we were able to pull seating charts, we were able to help Jamie and his staff do some of the tracing back. The county's doing a good job as far as contacting families and making that because as a school district, I can't quarantine anybody. It's the county that has to quarantine them. What we do is identify and say, okay, I've turned in Mr. Griswold, I've turned your name over to the county health office, they will be contacting you. We're trying to communicate, possibly over-communicate in some instances, but we feel like that's better than no communication. But we also got to be careful because the identity, we, sometimes we may not know who it is. In this case, we did, so we were able to do that, but we can't share that with, you know, anybody else.
One last question, I don't know if you talked about it. When's the first football game? How's that to be handled?
So, next, since we started school a week late, we made the decision not to allow any practices up until school started. And so, that actually, our first football game was supposed to be this Friday, so it'll be next Friday.
At home?
At home, yes.
What are the, how many people can count? Are you in the team?
Every, and the league voted for each home site to determine that piece. We're still working with the parameters of that, and we'll present that Thursday night to the board. But part of that will be either two, two people per participant, or possibly up to four. And we're still trying to make sure that once we, whatever we set, it can be controlled as far as administered and being able to watch for the social distancing and those types of things.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Roth, any other questions or comments from fellow commissioners to Dr. Roth? In my role as, go ahead, Commissioner Bader, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Bader.
Thank you. You guys are really hard to hear, just so you know. I'm hearing Dr. Roth very well. I just want to say that I know one of your staff out there, and I respect your teachers and staff, a great deal for what you're going through, and the families too. So I know you guys are doing the best you can, and you're doing a great job of keeping everything under control, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you, it means a lot.
Yeah, and I was just really going to say that as the president of the USD 207 school board, I know everything that Dr. Miss Pagel has gone through with his administrators and the teachers and the parents, quite frankly. And I know the same things are happening in USD 453. And it's really amazing in terms of the amount of variables that you have to consider, the permutations as far as how things, you know, different things that can happen with these various modes of instruction. So my hat's off to you and your senior administrators, your principals and your teachers, and please let them know that the City Commission appreciates and values their professionalism and under these very difficult circumstances.
Appreciate that, thank you, sir.
And have a, I think you've gotten off to a great start, and hopefully, I'm sure that'll continue. Thank you, Dr. Roth.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Roth.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, you too.
Take care. The next item is, we're going to do Fire Department before?
No, we can do Main Street.
Okay. That's okay. Main Street, First City Passageways of Downtown Project. And I believe we have Ms. Wendy Scheit, who's director, executive director of Leavenworth Main Street, who's joining us via GoToMeeting. Ms. Scheit, are you there?
Awesome, I'll do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have Wendy Scheit on the line just to provide any kind of background the commission may need on this project. The item before you tonight is related to the city's participation in what's called the First City Passageways Project. It's a public art initiative by Main Street with the goal to passageways, in the most part being doors, offer them to local and regional artists to create interest and excitement in the downtown. The city was approached by Main Street to include one of, a door on city property, and that is the door on the Performing Arts Center, what would be the east side of the Performing Arts Center for the Passageways Project. That was brought to my office. I'll give you an idea of the process. It has to be signed off by the property owner, and then all these also have to go to the Preservation Commission. But in order to be heard by the Preservation Commission, the property owner has to sign a letter indicating that they're willing to participate in this project. Staff, mainly myself, I believe this is a great project, great for the downtown. But it being on city property, I felt it appropriate to bring to the commission to give their consensus to allow me to sign, so this would go to the Preservation Commission. I had a couple of questions from Main Street, some related to what would be painted on the door, and I think Wendy can get to that a little bit. But looking for consensus on whether we wanted to offer up that door as part of this project or not. So I'll turn it over to the mayor, if you have any questions of Wendy or any discussion on the item.
Let me see if any of my fellow commissioners have questions or comments on, for either the city manager or Ms. Scheit on this project. Commissioner Breisler?
I think it's a great program. There's what, 10 or, how many here, 10 or 12 different doors? No, 14, I'm sorry. And yeah, I think it'll liven up things and be very interesting. We, there's only one city property here, obviously, the old, I refer to it as the Hollywood Theater. I know it's the.
Performing Arts, huh?
Yeah, Performing Arts, but it says Hollywood Theater here. So, and will you, Mr. Kramer or Mr. Grant, see the artwork before it goes on? I think that you need to see it to approve it.
I'll let Wendy talk to the process. That was one of our concerns too, is not necessarily wanting approval or anything like that, but just being aware of what it is.
Yeah.
You just never know.
Just make sure it's tasteful, tasteful.
Ms. Scheit?
Thank you, City Commissioners and Mayor. Yes, you will see a concept rendering, not a full rendering of exactly what they're going to do, but a concept once they, we selected who is going to paint each door or passageway. I think, I thought I gave a schedule, but the call is actually September 3 through 12, and it's accepted on a first-come, first-response basis. So the artist will indicate their first, second, third choice from the PowerPoint, and then the notification of the artist's selection and their location happens by Friday, September 18. The concept renderings are due to the selection committee by noon, September 30. And then they will have the, they will have the balance of the time. It starts on Friday, October 9th to, you know, fully develop what they want to paint, and it runs through Sunday, October 18th. There are doors, and there are windows, and there are a couple fences or gates. This is what the artist perceives if that door were opened or the window were opened or an archway was provided through that fence. So I believe you've got the, you know, they have to comply to common decency, whimsical, thoughtful, family-friendly, that encourage exploration of downtown. So.
Commissioner Bader, go ahead.
I don't have that part of it. All I have is the PowerPoint. Is there any theme or anything that you're throwing out to the artist? You said whimsical, is there any specific theme or anything? Or is it, what is it?
No theme, it's just what the artist might envision. If a building owner on their consent form has requested certain things or certain themes, we will ask the artist to recognize that. Most have a, you know, I think from our committee that's going to review the render, the concepts that come in, and naturally, if we, when we talk to the owners as well, we'll get that feedback. And so, no, it's open artists, and they're creative, and I know that they will respect that they were the first city of Kansas, but it's not a historic theme, it's not a anything theme. It's just interesting public art.
Okay, so this door that's on the side of the Hollywood Theater sits underneath Michael Young's painting, is that correct?
I believe, no, it's on the same side as Michael Young's, but it's not right underneath it. Well, maybe it's underneath, and I don't have the full view. I think it's a little bit to the south.
I hope it would be something that would go with that. See what I'm saying?
Sure.
Yeah, blend in with us, yeah.
Okay, okay, I guess that's all the questions I have. Wendy, would you send me the information on that?
Sure.
That you're sending to the artist?
I'll send it, do you want, send it to all of you? Carlo, how do you want that?
Yeah, Wendy, if you could send it to me, and I'll send it to the whole commission tonight, or as soon as I get it. This is Paul, by the way, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Bader?
Oh, there's the.
No, I'm good, I'm good, thanks.
No, so, yeah, that's, so it is offset.
So, once we have, we'll have a judging committee, and I don't know who that is yet, but there's a first, second, third place winner in cash from 500, 400, and 300. Each artist, the other 11 will receive a $50 stipend to help defray the cost of their supplies. We will promote it heavily to encourage folks to explore, further explore downtown and find these fun public art pieces. We may do a collage of photo print that could be for purchase. So it's just another level of adding interest to our downtown and getting people to explore.
Any other comments or questions from my fellow commissioners? Ms. Scheit, I have one or two comments. Having attended many of the Main Street, Leavenworth Main Street Board meetings, I think this has been a project of one of the design committee. I mean, I think I've heard talk of this over the last year or so. Is that, so is that correct? Has this been the kind of the outcome in terms of the concept and everything from that committee's work?
Oh, yes, it's from the design committee.
Okay, and they've been working probably for about a year? I think, what is it, Carolyn Kelly, who's the head of that committee? And I've heard things, and so, I guess I was a little surprised that we were at, where we are pleasantly surprised, but I know that there's been a lot of thought and a lot of emphasis and excitement in Leavenworth Main Street organization about this. So I think it is Carolyn who's the head of that committee, isn't she?
Huh?
Carolyn?
It was planned for A of this year, and then COVID hit.
Yeah.
And so, we found it, and we've talked to many artists and certainly talked to. And so we found it, and we've talked to many artists and certainly talked to Lee that's done our mural on the building, and it all felt like it would be certainly nothing where a lot of people are gonna be gathering. We encourage people to come watch when they're in town while they're painting, but that the artists really needed something to do as well. So I think most people are excited. We have a nice regional list of artists that we're gonna reach out to. If anyone knows of a student artist, someone in the community, please send me their contact information as soon as possible, because we want to include them in our call to artists.
Well, I'm going to, then, if there are no further questions or...
I do.
Okay, Commissioner Leonhardt, I'm sorry.
Wendy, so I know you had the dates for this project. So when is the, when are they, the doors due to be painted or done? Is it October 18? Or is that when they're starting?
Well, they'll start on Friday, October 9, and they have through Sunday, October 18 to complete it.
Okay, and then will you... Oh, go ahead.
Two weekends in the week.
Okay, then, okay. Thank you.
Good question. Commissioner Wilson, did you have anything?
Okay. Commissioner Bowder, will you be participating?
Pardon?
Will you be participating, Commissioner Bowder?
She's on the...
Are you gonna paint a door?
Okay.
And your, and your number four can be the one on the Hollywood Theater, Nancy.
The only thing, the only thing that's for sure is, I will not. It's open for anyone else, but I am not gonna be.
So we're gonna go around the horn here and see if we have a consensus. And we're gonna begin with, for this, moving forward with what we've discussed here this evening in terms of this First City Passageway Project, and specifically the, the door that the city manager briefed us on. So I'm gonna start with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Leonhardt?
Yes.
Okay, we have a consensus, but I wanna go to Commissioner Bricegar?
Yeah, I'm for it.
And I'm for it, too, as the mayor, so we've got a completely unanimous consensus that this is something that is very good for the city, downtown. Certainly emphasizes improving, as much as we can, the appearance and the image of downtown. And so I'm very happy about it. I think my fellow commissioners are, too. So thank you, Ms. Scheit, and we'll, we'll look forward to what happens over the next probably month and a half or so.
And I'll note that because it goes to the Preservation Commission tomorrow evening, I can't guarantee it'll be on this schedule. It depends on them, I guess. Because I was supposed to turn in the consents two weeks ago. So I hope it can be on this round. If not, it'll be on in the spring, but it'll be up to the Preservation Commission in July.
Well, hopefully, you could, you know, October, the fall is a good time to do this. So hopefully, hopefully now with, well, what, what we, you know, hopefully that'll, can be the case. But we'll, we'll see. We'll, we'll, we'll look for the outcome of the Preservation Committee.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Kramer? Thank you. Next, now we've got the chief. Come on up, chief. Fire Department report and presentation of Bricer, the Compliance Engine.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, appreciate you coming this evening. Bit's a little bit to tell you about a company that we would, we would like to enter into a simple agreement with. We started kind of looking at this about 18 months ago. Didn't know anything about it at the time. And then, you know, over the past 18 months, it seems like every day we get things like this. Villas Park, Illinois adopts Compliance Engine. Kenley Park, Illinois, get them from all over, you know, in, in some of the metro. So we started looking more into it last year, and, you know, they, we called them out, and they presented some stuff to us and stuff, so we could educate ourselves what it was about. And then, then once we got into, we started into the 2018 Fire Code. Now, this is something that doesn't have anything, it's not tied into 2018 Fire Code, except for there is a section there that says that the fire authority can request the format, form and format of how we get notified that things get inspected and checked. Next slide, please. I'm gonna start kind of, not what the Compliance Engine is, but talk about our businesses, our commercial structures. Our commercial structures, hotels, manufacturers, a lot of places are required to have sprinkler systems, fire alarm systems. With the sprinklers, there's dry pipe, wet pipe systems. If it's outside, it's a dry pipe, has air in it. Stand pipes, the high rises have stand pipes, anything over like three stories, new structures have stand pipes, so we can hook in, pump water up to, up to the elevation. Commercial hoods have suppression systems in them, and also hoods are required to clean the grease every so often, get them cleaned up at the restaurants and stuff. So there's, it's, it only pertains to things like that. Nothing to do with residential or any business that doesn't have some type of suppression system. Okay, also, another thing that's supposed to be, one thing would be like a body shop, when you have a paint booth.
Yeah.
Those are regulated pretty tight, you have, you can have a major explosion or something in a paint booth. So we're talking about that, and I don't wanna get ahead of my slides here, but Bricer, with all the agencies that they've, they started doing analytics on it, and right now, there's probably 40, 40% of life safety systems that are not inspected annually. Next slide, please.
Across the, across the nation?
Yes, sir, across the nation. And there's, you know, and we don't know whether, it's hard for us to know whether or not that people are out of compliance, or if there's anything, a deficiency or something of that nature. Okay, now I'm gonna get into the Compliance Engine. It's called the Compliance Engine, and it's by Bricer. And I think they go by the Client Compliance Engine, and I'm not sure what Bricer stands for. But it's basically a company that got started, it's, it's a web-based service. And they, they, the communities that, that, they entered into a simple agreement with the Fire Department. There's no money, there's no charge to the Fire Department or the city. And they start collecting data, and, and, and they, and they start building a database. All the businesses, all the commercials, that they have some type of fire system, and that are required by code to have it inspected annually, semi-annually, annually, or a five-year internal. So they, they start tracking that and collecting data and build that. So that's what they do, and it's all the drive, 100% code compliant. And I got a couple of slides that I actually included in your packet that really jumped out at me. It reduces automatic, it reduces false alarms when things are working right. They provide, they provide, and this really, I think a lot of people, it's not that they won't get it done. It's like me having to remind my kids to change oil in their car. And so what they'll, what they do is, is for the businesses that have these, once identified, 37 days out, they send them a notice, they allow seven days for the postal service. So they get a 30-day notice that, hey, just FYI, and it'd be on our letterhead, very soft, that this is coming due. Okay? If it, if they haven't got information back that they've got inspected, and I'll get into how that works, at 45 days, they send another letter, letter out and say, just, hey, just, you're now 45 days beyond when you're supposed to get a service. Today, then, no one gets a reminder. And I don't think it's, I think a lot of times you just, it just, you know, you don't think about it when you're out there doing a business and stuff.
Right.
Now, the Fire Department, we have two stations that have sprinkler systems, and we're pretty good every year doing it. We did it this year, and we actually, we had some valves and a couple of things that we needed to get repaired. But we're the Fire Department, and we have it in our calendar so that we don't forget, you know, so...
That's good to know. That's good to know, chief.
But that was, that was one of the things that I liked, I liked that the thought that...
Yeah.
That we were given notice. If we go into the simple agreement, what they do, they're basically, they will build a dashboard, which is on the screen now. They'll build a dashboard that we, we have access to, which is City Leavenworth. And you can, you can look on there and look at the, who's in compliance, the deficiencies, the deficiency tracking, the analytics. So that's what we'll be provided with, okay? If we go with them. And our thought was, and me and the Fire Marshal, Andy Brooks is behind me, the Fire Marshal, we've kind of talked about, you know, if we do this, then probably at the 45-day mark, we'll probably go, go out there and have a visit with them and just see, you know, if there are things, anything we can help them with, or just, you know, see what's going on there, to come in compliant with the system. Next slide, please. It is around the country, and just threw this in there real quick. And this slide says 300 departments implemented. It's actually, Andy's been calling them, it's actually real close to 500 now. It's like every day, it seems like we're getting these notices that more people are adopting it. I mean, I wanted to stay in the Mark region for a reason, but just in Kansas, we got Topeka, Wichita, a couple of the bigger cities, Leewood, Overland Park, Shawnee, Olathe. I think Lenex is getting ready to go pretty soon. You jump across the river, you, you got small, large, you got Carney, Kansas City, Missouri, Independence, Grandview, Belton, Belton's getting ready to come on, and Raymore. So in the Mark region, right here, close, and there's, there's reason why I want to tell you that. And I just jumped ahead of myself a little bit, but 300 departments, 500 departments have implemented. And on this, when they had 300 departments, they had 8,000 inspection companies registered. So, and I refer to that as a third party.
Third party.
The companies out there, and we Googled another day, because we didn't really know how many, what, 15 or so, 20 maybe, Andy? That, that are in the metropolitan area, when I Googled, that actually do inspections on fire suppression systems. A lot of them have engineers and stuff. They install them, they inspect them, and things of that nature. So there's, across the country, it's about 8,000. And then over 800,000 buildings that are being tracked. So you see with 300 departments, they're tracking 800,000 buildings. So they're up, they're up even higher now. Next slide, please. One of the things, too, I'll mention, if we're getting to the slides here, is take our fire airdow apparatus. Okay, NFPA says that our ground ladders and our airdow apparatus has to have an annual non-destructive test every year. I make sure that our trucks go over to our municipal service center twice a year. Sometimes, you know, I've been talking to the foreman over there, sometimes he'd say, well, I really don't have the mileage for an oil change. I said, I understand that, but I, I still want you to, to bring it over. And I said, because we don't know, you know, when time it gets back over there in six months from now, it may be over, so I still want it serviced. I said, but I'm not just coming from the, for the oil and the air change. I want your eyes on them brakes and those springs. Because, you know, when you're driving in town, you're on them brakes a lot, and they're heavy trucks. It's not like we're running down the highway. And so we're required to do annual inspections. So our, our trucks go there, and our shop looks at them twice a year. Our guys are walking around them and stuff like that. We have a company come in every year called STI, Structural Technologies. They were just here about a month ago. And they went through it, and they certify it. Well, our, usually what happens is they'll find something, something that'll be, doesn't block the certification, but something that's, we have to get fixed with the next maintenance. Then there's some things that say it can't be certified. So we get that repaired, we send that invoice to them that we got it done, and they send us a certification. And on our Quint down Station 1, it has a pulley that pulls the extension cable that's actually separating. You can't look at it until it's doing that. You know, they got stuff and different things, microflux, they tell that. It also had cracked, a couple cracked leaf springs. And I noticed it seemed like that truck was sagging a little bit in the, in the, in the rear. And the driver said, well, some of them said, well, it's been like that for several weeks. Well, we took it downtown, there's only a few places in town that do it. We took it down there, we got it the other day, truck's sitting up a little higher. And the guy actually showed us some of our stuff. It was really worn. Had it not been for that third party doing that, their eyes focused on that stuff, we, you know, we'd have never done it. So that's why it's important to have somebody else, you know, that do those, those inspections that... And where I'm getting this is, is we go out and look at stuff, but we're not experts in those systems and stuff. So it's getting a professional in there that actually can certify it. We, we can't do that. The Los Angeles slide I have before you, they were, they looked, this is looking at deficiencies. And when Bricer first, when they first implemented Bricer, they were 62% past due. On, past due, and then they implemented Bricer, and within 12 months, they brought that down to 24% past due. Just because, mainly it's because they get a letter, and they follow, and they also follow with the phone call, Bricer does. And, and they also added in Los Angeles, over 4,500 buildings into the database in the first 12 months that the Fire Marshal didn't know existed out there.
Right. That's good.
So that's, that's great. And like I said, they, they, they say the reason why this happens, because the notification. They just tell the people, and then they follow the phone call. And strictly, they'll, they'll get as soft or as hard as you want. I wanna use the soft version, because my goal is not to ticket someone. My goal is just to get the thing fixed. Risk reduction, that's, that's our goal, primary goal. And, and working with people, working with people. Next slide, please. The next slide really jumped at me. It was in Austin, Texas. And when Austin first talked to the Compliance Engine, they, large department, a lot of staff, they said, well, we've got enough people, we can probably just focus on people, just to kind of build their own database and do this. Use your model, do this. Well, after the, after the first year, they gained 4% compliant, second year, 6%, the third year, 11%. They implemented in October 17, Bricer. And October 1 of 2018, 12 months' case they revealed, they jumped from 11 to 47% increase. Just, that's what, that's all Bricer does, you know? When we try to do it in-house, one, we don't really have the staff to do it, but there's other things that come along, and you're not focused just on that. So that, that one really jumped at me. Next slide, please. The Raleigh, North Carolina, was just kind of looking at deficiencies and the trend that went up of fixing the deficiencies.
Fixing, yeah.
Yeah, fixing deficiencies. And it, you know, it's risk reduction, and everybody has a, you have a system in there. You stay at one of the hotels, and you have an expectation the system's gonna work. So that's, that's what it's all about.
That's good work.
Next slide, please. Okay, the, this here was kind of hard to read, and, and I couldn't get it any larger. Because I took it off a slide of their PowerPoint, so I couldn't really manipulate it or anything. But basically, in, in October 2018, Bricer broke a record of 50,000 notifications sent out. So they're, they're growing all the time. We don't pay for it. The business don't pay for it, like, because I asked that. It's always costing. So how does Bricer make the money? These third parties, when they, when they know that you've adopted, you know, you have adopted, Bricer, as they call it, they, when they, they go out and do an inspection, when they go back, they entered into that database. They can log into it, they enter into that database, and that's how we end up seeing it. And then same, they go back and repair it. Every time they log in to enter data on inspection, they pay $15. So the contractors, the third parties, are paying $15 per inspection. Okay? So just devil advocate, I kept thinking, okay, why would they want to do that?
Right.
Well, when you're going from 11%, 47%, their business is, is jumping leaps and bounds.
Yeah.
A fire captain I used to work for, his son, I've known he's had a business for years in the metro area, he cleans, he cleans grease hoods and shoes around the whole metro. In fact, I, I called him tonight, hadn't talked to the kid in many years. I could say kid, because I knew him when he was real little.
Sure.
He's a grown man now, but he actually has one, he actually has a Sonic here in Leavenworth, because I asked him specifically. But he goes all over, and he really likes it. He said that, he likes it, yeah, he goes back and enters it. But he said that, you know, when he, sometimes in the past, he's been called out somewhere, and it's, they hadn't had it cleaned in three years, when they should be on a quarterly. Real busy restaurants should be on a quarterly, he told me. And he said that, you know, they get charged a lot. He says, I'm not just, you're not paying for just this year, you're paying for the last two years. You know, I just, it was so bad. And he says, it's, you know, a lot of, as they come around, he, he just likes it. And he said, even talking to the businesses, he told me that they kind of like it, too, because they're never out of compliant. They don't have us coming down there. The state's showing up, wanting to write them a ticket or something.
Reduces their risk, too.
Right, and that reduces their risk.
I mean, that's the main thing.
And maybe a little cost, you know, just like we had to pay for some work on a backflow valve and a butterfly and a head, this time ourselves. So that, but it's, it's getting it every year, or whatever the timeline, and you're not getting past that. So it's, it's about getting everybody in compliance. That's all that is driving. I asked him if, I said, well, I said, but you just, are you passing your costs along? He says, he actually puts, puts it on his ticket, $15 for, for the Compliance Engine. He said, he really, no one's ever balked at that. He actually listed. Chief Andy here, he's talked to the Fire Marshal in Shawnee quite a bit, because they have it. And they indicated to him that they were probably adding it to, to the thing anyway. You know, if they're already going down here and doing these other cities that haven't, come into a city that doesn't have it, they're probably charged anyway, just they don't list it out on the, on the ticket. But the young man has got, and what he, he says he have over 150 restaurants he does, and that's just not once a year, some of them get done every quarter.
Sure.
He said that, he's, then hadn't had anybody balk at that, you know, on the, on the fee on that. So anyway, that's it, in a nutshell. So, anyway, that's it, it in a nutshell, uh, can't think of anything else, but I'd be more happy to answer questions.
Any, any questions or comments from my fellow commissioners to the, uh, fire chief? Commissioner Presser?
Uh, chief, uh, you've talked about you want to go with the light approach when people are not responding or out of compliance, and, you know, just to cajole them and to get in on the compliance. What about on the hotels? Uh, I mean, I can understand wanting to be the light approach, but on hotels, can, are you a little bit tougher there?
Well, that's, when you're dealing with life safety, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, now, that's just, and we already have, some of the, the facilities that we already have here, and you, you can name some of the bigger ones, like Hallmark or the schools, uh, hotels, they have full-time, almost maintenance people, and when they, a system goes down for maintenance, they call us and say, hey, we're offline, and we've actually had some, when they go offline, like maybe a nursing home or something, they have to put people on what we call Fire Watch.
Okay.
They have to have somebody there on Fire Watch when the system goes down. Uh, so, you know, occasionally someone will work on something and forget to give us a call, alarm goes off, and we're responding, then we'll get a call, say, hey, we accidentally, something of that nature, too, but no, no, we just don't let it go.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the, uh, police chief on this particular?
Yeah, Chief Birch.
Sorry, for, for Chief Birch, the fire chief of Leavenworth, I'm sorry. Uh, any, go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, when would this be, um, implemented? I mean, if it, or when?
I'll, I'll talk about that.
Oh, okay.
No, I, I appreciate you, uh, commenting about the business model, because I was, and I saw the little blurb in there, but your, how you explained it gave me more comfort, uh, some comfort in terms of, somebody's got to make money in this deal, so, you know, you, you've explained how that works. Now, you'd have, you'd have basically a dashboard, so you're logging into a website or something like that, no licensing fees or anything like that to do that?
Not that they.
Okay, okay. Um, I think it, it's a really kind of a very important step forward with respect to, as you say, reducing risk, you know, in terms of enhancing safety, and, uh, and maybe even in, incre, well, increasing the number of, um, maybe we don't have awareness of some of the, you know, facilities or buildings that we should have awareness, I think the system may help with that, right? In terms of just the, kind of a more accurate inventory of facilities that have to have these inspections.
They even asked the fire marshal a question in our database, do we do inspections? How many restaurants do we have here in Leavenworth?
A lot.
You'd be surprised at the number.
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly, well, that's good. Um, let me see here, are we, do we need a consensus on?
If Commissioner Bowder doesn't have anything, then I'll have a couple.
Commissioner Bowder, do you have something?
Okay.
Anything, Commissioner?
Okay, go ahead. So, let's talk about the step forward. What I wanted to do tonight is, uh, Gary brought this up just briefly at the budget meeting, and this was the first presentation, it's a little bit complex, I think he did a really good job tonight explaining what it is, um, but having done this for a little while now, I think we probably need to let it sit tonight, let the public sort of, um, you know, the word get out, read the paper, whatever it has, and then we would probably bring it back in a week or two to get a consensus to turn to the agreement, just in case we get any feedback, there's not any consideration that we rushed into anything, so, um, it's pretty straightforward, it's, I think it's a, it's a win-win, but, um, maybe we'll bring it back in a couple of weeks, once we've had a little chance, uh, for people to hear about it.
Okay.
Okay.
Makes sense. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Birch, fire chief of Leavenworth, Kansas. I got it, sorry.
Thank you.
Next is update on, thank you, thank you, update on fall/winter city activities.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, uh, the, uh, the goal of this next item is to communicate, uh, with the commission and communicate with the public as we enter the fall and winter season and the events that, um, traditionally happen in the community. Some of those events, such as Camp Leavenworth, have already been canceled, um, but I wanted to talk a little bit first about sort of staff's approach to events as we go into the fall. Our approach all along, whether it's been city services, uh, such as recycling center or the brush site, is we start with what can we do? And, um, we evaluate that first, and if we decide that there is no way that the event, as it's designed, or the event with modifications can happen, then we cancel it. Um, but we do try to find out is, are there ways to adapt, um, and let our residents enjoy some of the, uh, events, uh, that, that they, they so dearly love each year. So, I wanted to talk about, uh, our approach over the next couple of months. What we've decided to do in general is focus on three events per month, one October, one November, one in December. Um, we do feel that it is, um, the smart thing to do to eliminate some of our smaller events, uh, events like breakfast with Santa, that just do not, um, are not conducive to distancing or, um, items that are around food and, and stuff like that, uh, the holiday bazaar, but what can we do? So, what I want to talk about are the three events, um, some are much more farther along in the planning, um, but so that the public is aware of sort of the thought process of, of the city staff. So, the first item I want to talk about is, uh, uh, for October, which is Halloween, which is the trunk or treat, um, Steve Grant and his staff, Pat Kitchens and his staff, working on logistics and crowd control, believes that we can, um, hold a trunk or treat event at Sportsfield, that we can do so safely, that we can do so, meeting all of the county guidelines or best practices, um, for safety, for distancing, for, uh, families going in groups, um, it can be outdoors, so we can spread it out. Um, uh, Halloween is conducive to masks, um, because they can just be part of a larger costume, you know, you don't lose a whole lot, um, you can decorate, uh, trunk or treat cars. So, I wanted to show you, uh, this is a draft at this time, but it's, it's, uh, been fleshed out pretty well by Steve Grant and Pat Kitchens, that we would use Sportsfield, that we would line families up along what would be the outfield fence of, uh, Sportsfield One, um, and that we would have, uh, trunk or treat decorated, uh, sort of vendors around the inside of the parking lot, and that families would progress through. Um, we would work on little details like, you know, handing the candy versus having it out on a table versus in a bag, those are the smaller details we'll work out. Uh, vendors having gloves on, vendors having a mask on, um, that kind of stuff, um, probably would not require maybe the, uh, the families, if they were spaced out, and if they were spaced out from the vendors, to have to do that. Um, but we'll, we'll focus a little bit more on that and work with Jamie Miller as we get closer. But, um, we sort of wanted to run this, uh, idea by you, um, it's been vetted, and we think we can do it safely, uh, we're confident we can do it safely, and we can have a, a great Halloween event for the community. So, uh, let's stop there before I get to the next one and, and look for feedback on, um, if there's any comments, any questions, um, as we look to, to start planning this event and getting people to, to be one of our trunk or treat vendors.
I have questions.
Commissioner Leonhardt?
Um, so this is like from five to seven, so, um, anyone can go, right? How, would you control the, I mean, because I'm sure this is going to be a great turnout, so how do you control the overflow and?
Um, it's conducive, there's so much space in that area that we'll have, um, they can go all the way down, um, the street there, uh, heading west, and we, we'll can block off those streets, yeah.
Okay.
And, um, so, uh, we have plenty of parking in the, the area, uh, plenty of space on that, that we can even get into the fields if need be to, to stack groups, and we'll make sure we have plenty of staff there to keep the groups, you know, in their, um, distanced areas. But, yeah, that's why we chose Sportsfield, because of the space.
Okay, no, great.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments on this particular activity slash event for the city manager?
Commissioner Bowder, I believe.
Oh, Commissioner Bowder, go ahead.
I like the idea of it being outside again, I think that's a great idea, and the distancing that you could do out there would be a lot better. Um, I, I love it, so there wouldn't be any haunted house component, it would just be the vendors and the candy, right?
Right, it would be the, uh, the individual chunks decorated and the people passing out candies and costumes, but, yeah, there would be no haunted house aspect of it this year, just, uh, up to the individual vendors to, to decorate the best they can.
I love that idea, thank you.
Any other commissioners, uh, comments or questions?
Good idea.
No, I think, I mean, it looks like the planning is well-advanced at this point, so, uh, was, and the diagram's worth a thousand, picture's worth a thousand words, so, um, I think it's a, a great activity, a great event, where we've adapted, uh, for COVID-19, so, I think you should continue, uh, unless there's any objection, I think, just continue planning and, and, uh, because I don't think, you, you don't need a consensus on, this is just information at this point, right? But I.
Right, and to communicate and to get feedback, and I think we've gotten some of that, so I think we're, we feel like we're on the right track.
Right, we are on the right track as far as that particular.
We would encourage maybe the commission to have one of the stands at the trunk or treat, maybe, uh, decorate, um, and, uh, maybe one, so that'd be great.
We'll put Commissioner Wilson's. No, well, well, I think that's a good idea, you need to put us to work and get our creativity working, so.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Um, so then we turn, we're turning our attention to November, November would be the Veterans Day Parade, Wednesday, November eleventh. Um, this one, uh, is in some control of the city, because we have to approve these every year, but this is really right now in the hands of the Veterans Day Parade Committee, and, um, I want to applaud them so far, um, for the work they've done. Uh, we have a meeting later this week with them. The point of putting this on here is to communicate to the commission and to the public that right now it's not canceled, um, we are seeing how we can do it, can we, maybe is it a more focused, a return to a, a tighter focus, a smaller event, uh, really focusing on veterans? Is there a way that we can accommodate it? Again, it's also outside, um, we, there's ways that you can spread people out, obviously it's over a big area in the downtown, we're slightly concerned about bringing that many people to the downtown, but I don't have much to update on, on this point, that I know that the Veterans Day Parade Committee is, um, coordinating with Fort Leavenworth to see how the Department of the Army feels about participating in these types of events, they may not, um, give their blessing on something like this, which would certainly change, I think, how the Veterans Day Parade Committee decided to move forward. So, um, once we have a meeting or two, I'll come back to the commission and communicate to the public, I know a lot of people are interested in how this goes, but I wanted to let you all and the commission know that we are trying to work towards something, and we'll see what we can get.
Good. And, Mr. Presser, you have something?
Uh, I probably have seen forty or fifty Veterans Day parades in this town, all the way back to high school, and this various times since, uh, unless the temperature's really below, let's say, twenty, uh, there's going to be a heck of a crowd downtown, and they're, they're packed three and four deep, uh, I think that's going to be the challenge. I hope it happens. Uh, Veterans Day Parade, you know, is an institution in this city, uh, been around for over a hundred years, uh, but there'll be some challenges there that have to be worked out with Veterans Day Parade Committee, as well as the, uh, County Health Officer and all of us, uh, that's, uh, I think, the biggest challenge.
Right, I agree.
Commissioner Leonhardt, do you know, is there a deadline to where this can or can't happen, or?
I think, uh, it's poor timing that we didn't have the meeting before tonight, but we have a meeting on Thursday with the Veterans Day Parade Committee, and we'll learn a lot more then.
More, okay, good, good, okay.
Anything, Commissioner Bowder, any comments on this particular activity slash event?
Um, the only thing is, I know the last couple of years it's been so cold, I can't see, everybody's face was covered, and hardly anybody was outside anyway, so, I think a lot depends on the weather, but maybe we can do a, a smaller event, like they say, a lot depends on what the board says as well.
Right. Okay, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, so, uh, it was very, very cold last year, quite a bit of snow, and, uh, yeah, we were still able to be successful with the event, so I'm looking forward and hope that it continues this year.
Good, I think the planning's where it needs to be at this point, and I know you'll let us know about the, you know, the results of the meeting, uh, that you'll have on, I think it's Thursday, right? The, the Veterans, Veterans Day Parade Committee, so, I think we're very comfortable with where this is at right now, and, uh, just keep us informed, thank you.
And then the final, um, item that we've, um, devoted even less time to at this point is doing something with, um, holiday lighted parade, Merry Christmas tree lighting, um, you know, we're not canceling Christmas, uh, we are working toward, um, something, um, you know, we're going to be very limited, we're probably not going to have choirs, we're probably not going to have, um, food trucks down at Hay Market, those type of just congregation events, but we do have some elements of that that work well, we have a parade element that maybe we could make a little bit larger, um, we have the ability to do a lot, um, so we're working on that, we'll come back to the commission soon, I know it's, you know, just now, September first, but we start planning that kind of stuff about right now, so more to come, we're going to do something, um, and if anybody in the community, um, has any great ideas, you know, feel free to reach out, um, if the commission, as you have ideas. We're also, um, looking to see what other cities are doing, you know, sometimes the best ideas are someone, that someone else has, so, um, we will do something to, to mark the holiday and Christmas season, I just don't know what yet.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Bowder, any comments on this particular event?
Yeah, can we try to have fireworks?
Anything's possible.
No, really, we used to have fireworks, and they were beautiful in the winter, because you don't have the haze that you do in the summer, and, and they really are beautiful in the, in the cold weather. That'd be wonderful.
Oh, on the river, yeah?
That's a good idea.
You could probably get a good deal on them in, uh, December, too.
Well, yeah, last year during Camp Leavenworth, we had the fireworks, and that was really cool, right?
Beautiful.
Right, all right, right over the river, um, so, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Bowder, and I think the, uh, city manager just took a note, so.
Yep, I did.
So, um, any other comments or questions from commissioners on this event or the previous two? No, I think, uh, very, very good planning, good, uh, adaptability as far as the city manager and the staff, looking at what can be done, considering the circumstances we have with respect to COVID-19, so, we're encouraged, and I think your point about if anybody in the, any of our citizens have some, some good ideas, such as, uh, Commissioner Bowder just kind of outlined, uh, just contact the city manager or our, uh, Strategic Communications Officer, Melissa Bauer, and, uh, we'll go from there. Anything else on this one?
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is, um, executives, we have an executive session, and, um, so I'm going to make a motion.
Hold on a second, a couple things, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Uh, one, we have to open a special meeting before we make the motion.
Oh, that's right.
But the other thing is, uh, Commissioner Bowder, are you taking part in the executive session?
Yes.
Yeah, she is calling in?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have comments from commissioners after this.
Somebody call me, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, I'll call you.
That's a good point, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, I do need, uh, somebody to make a motion to open a special meeting.
So moved, second.
There's a motion in a second to open a special meeting, any comments or questions? If not, we are going to begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhardt?
Aye.
Commissioner Priceiger?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
And ayes, the mayor vote aye, the ayes have it, five to zero, so we are now in a special meeting, and the one event we have is the executive session, correct?
Yes.
Okay, let me go ahead and go to that particular, so I'll go ahead as the mayor and make the, uh, motion. I move to recess into executive session to discuss economic development opportunities for KSA seventy-five hyphen forty-three nineteen B four, to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships. The open meeting to resume in the city commission chambers at, how much time do you think we need, Mr. Kramer?
Fifteen minutes.
Okay, so we'll go, uh, eight twenty-five PM by the clock in the city commission chambers, city manager Paul Kramer and assistant city manager Taylor Tetter are requested to be present during the executive session, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to go into executive session until eight twenty-five PM, we'll start voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Priceiger.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
And ayes, and ayes, the mayor vote aye, five to zero, the ayes have it. So we, the motion carries, we're now in executive session. We will be in executive session. I guess we need to, um,
Close it?
We're going to close, we're going to have to close the special meeting, correct?
No, we'll just adjourn when we're done.
Oh, just adjourn.
So we're going to go around the. Okay, so listen, um, we've come out of executive session, I'm going to go around the horn like I normally do, and I'm going to start with Mr. Kramer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of notes from our Public Information Officer, uh, for the public. Uh, September fifth, the city is offering free household hazardous waste disposal from eight-thirty to noon at the back entrance of the Municipal Service Center, that's off, uh, Pennsylvania, uh, along with the first free Saturday. This is the makeup for the spring cleanup event that was canceled in April. Household hazardous waste includes anything that should not be disposed of down the drain or in the trash. Everything should be labeled in its original container with no leaking. Um, the city will have another mask giveaway from two to four Saturday, September twelfth. We moved it back a week because of the Labor Day holiday, we were going to do it, uh, next weekend, but it'll be Saturday, September twelfth at Hay Market Square, Seventh and Cherokee Streets, uh, vehicles again entering from the Seventh Street side and exiting onto Cherokee. And then finally, a reminder that City Hall and the Riverfront Community Center are closed September seventh for the Labor Day holiday. Trash will be delayed one day throughout the week of September seventh through eleventh.
Anything going on, um, up by the fort gate on Cadence?
Right, so, uh, I can announce that the city issued demo permits today, so, uh, that's a huge step in the project. Uh, behind the scenes, we've been doing alley vacation, plating, um, and that kind of work, bonds, uh, public improvement bonds with the company. Those are all in, those are all paid, those are all issued, and we issued demo permits today, so I believe they have some equipment up there. So, uh, in the next day or two, you should see the commanders in, um, and the bank property starting to be torn down.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you.
So I'm going to start with, uh, Commissioner, uh, Leonhard. Do you have any comments or anything you'd like to share with the citizens?
No, uh, just to, um, have a safe, uh, Labor Day weekend.
Okay.
That's all I have, yeah.
Commissioner Priceiger?
Uh, two things. I think September eighth is the annual doggy splash at Wolfman Park. Obviously, the pool hasn't been open for the public this year. Uh, but they are having the, the dog swim, I think it's a week from Tuesday, it is September eighth, is it, Mr. Kramer or Mr. Tetter?
I believe so, that's right.
I think it is. You have to register your dog, you have to buy a ticket for, there's three sessions, one small dog session and two large dog sessions. And if you have a dog that likes to swim, it, it's a great time and it's fun to watch. You cannot go in the water this year. In the past, you could kind of go in with your dog, but no one's allowed in the water. Uh, so I just want to mention that. And I saw the county-wide COVID percentages today and it troubles me. Uh, we hit ten percent. And, um, it, if that maintains at ten percent, uh, or higher, uh, I think it's incumbent upon us to relook at our, our programs. We're right now, with the weekend, they reported the, uh, when they report those, Monday afternoon, it was ten percent. That's high. That's an issue. That's all I have.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I just wanted to say happy Labor Day.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowder?
Well, I don't know if I should bring this up here, but at some point can we look at the streets again, the, the, um, I guess it's the granite seal that's causing a problem. I've got a problem in front of my house and I know that, uh, you probably have all got, some of you have gotten emails from people who have had problems with that. And it, can we get some sort of update from Mike McDonald on what's, uh, what is the deal with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioner Bowder?
Uh, everybody have a happy, um, uh, holiday weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mike comments, just a reminder on Leavenworth. Today is the first of September, so the whole month of September is Leavenworth. And I think each of us, each of the citizens, all the residents of Leavenworth and Fort Leavenworth have gotten a passport. And I think it's a really good schedule, a lot of fun activities, particularly for families with children. And, um, so just, and there's, you can, if you go to like fifteen businesses, uh, downtown, you'll be entered into, uh, some type of drawing. So just a reminder that, um, this is the alternative to what we would have had in terms of Camp Leavenworth and, which was so successful last year. But we, uh, made the decision to go ahead and do something as an alternative, and I'm very happy where we are right now. And I think Thursday, I'm going to have a Facebook Live Town Hall at eleven hundred, eleven AM. And in addition to having Mr. Jamie Miller, the Public Health Officer, who we can, you know, ask about the, I saw the same, we all saw the same statistic that came from, we'll ask him about that. But in addition to him, somebody, uh, I don't know if it'll be Mr. Tetter or Kelly or one of our project leads from O'Neil Events and Marketing is going to, I think, talk about Le- Leavenworth. It'll be Mr. Tetter, that's fine. And, um, so we look forward to that, being our two subject matter experts, our two guests at the Facebook Live Town Hall on Thursday at eleven AM. So without any further ado, um, really, we'll, we'll adjourn.